Does Justin come to these meetings anymore?
No, he's on the phone.
He doesn't come in person anymore?
I don't know.
Not at this time. He wasn't because of, um...
The C-word?
Yes, the C-word.
Casual. Do them to be casual. Okay, let's see here.
It's like everywhere I go, my kid's ass. Is anybody here? Iris, my four-year-old.
God.
No.
Hey, Jeff.
Hey.
How you doing?
You know.
We made a lock and roll in a minute. Let's see, we are at one minute and counting.
Mary.
It's my day. Okay, I'm not bringing that on later. Feels like I'm leaving the truck.
No, no. It went off once about like maybe seven years ago.
Okay. Once was enough.
It's on my truck then. I leave it on my bike hands on my truck.
Are you ready, Robert?
Not really.
Okay, let's go home. Not a problem. Let's go.
Settle down here.
Works for me.
Yeah, let's do it.
Oh, boy, here comes more parking issues. Great. Okay, and are you ready down there, Mr. Crummich?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Leggero?
Oh, I'm ready.
Is ready as you'll ever be?
I am so ready.
How about the rest of the class? We all ready? Done? Here we go. Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting on what is today, the sixteenth of August. Please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Crummich?
Did you start the recording? Because I think it said start recording. I don't know if you clicked it.
Start your recording. Thank you.
I am here.
Councilmember Ballinger?
Here.
Councilmember Swift?
Here.
Mayor Protim Leggero?
Here.
And Mayor Als.
Here. Okay, looks like we're going to start with the presentation, but we're going to put that off. The recipient is going to be running a little late, but we will deal with that when he gets here. All right, moving on to consent counter. These items are considered routine in nature and act upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Regarding item number two, Mayor Als, I will be abstaining from voting on check number seven, five, seven, zero, four.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Disposed? Motion carries by will. Staff communication.
So, Mayor and Council, in your agenda packet were the monthly reports for July from the departments, the Treasurers Report, Police Department, Animal Control, Recreation, Development Services, Building Department, Public Works, Water, Waste Water, and then our project report for July. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have on those.
Gentlemen, are there any questions for staff?
I do have, um, I'm going to shoot the moon on this one. I'm going to ask questions on every single item here, so let's go through it. Three A, the Treasury Report. I just, trying to be specific, how are the reserves doing? How's our reserve fund looking? Are we maintaining that percentage that we wanted?
Yes, we are.
And I know this stuff is probably contained, but I just wanted to have us all talk about it.
Yes.
That percentage is what, fifteen percent?
Thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three percent. There you go, public.
Thirty-three percent, the reserve fund is being funded. Great.
Yes, so the very first line there on your screen, the, um, the $2,574 is what we have estimated to be our, um, our reserves for this budget year.
And that's basically the city's savings account for whatever we need. Okay. Very good.
It's a trampoline.
Have we seen an uptick in tax revenues in 2021? Have we seen them up or down based upon COVID and everything like that?
In regards to sales tax revenue?
Sales tax, yeah, or property tax, either one.
So, property tax is, um, once a year, so we won't see the effects of like the recent real estate market maybe until, we'll get our first, well, I should get the estimate from the county assessor in October. And then that usually tells me where property taxes fall, uh, fall for this year. For, um, sales tax, we get those, um, it's quarterly. They're a little behind, so, um, but our current revenue from 2021 was up actually from the prior year, and I want to say it was like ten or twelve percent up.
But the sales taxes were down a little bit?
No, sales tax were up.
It was up, ten or twelve percent?
Yes.
This year as opposed to last year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's all I had for A. Moving on to B, um, the Police Department report. I just wanted to know, um, how's the crime doing in town? Up or down 2021 thus far, Chief?
If you could see in the report, it's down a little bit. It's a lot now from last year, but I think pandemic and people being cooped up had something to do with that.
It was good for crime?
Yeah.
And how about the new, the plate carriers that are available, the officers? They talked to a couple of them. They seem to like those. Those are going good?
So far, we've got one in today. Um, they are kind of slow, backordered. Everything nowadays takes considerable amount of time.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, C, Animal Control. I know a while ago we had a staffing issue out there, and, uh, how's that going? Are we, are we able to staff that fully and how are they doing?
At the moment, we, we lost one to the Army.
Okay.
He left, uh, yesterday, Christopher Rodriguez. Uh, is Gus still here? He left yesterday, Craig.
Oh, he left this morning.
Oh, he left this morning. So, he's headed to Missouri. There was one that just completed a physical and got the clearance on her. She should be starting pretty soon. And that leaves us with four and, uh, four part-time AC officers, or excuse me, assistants.
Is that enough to kind of cover what we need?
It will.
It will. All right, thank you. Um, the Rec Department. Uh, the numbers for the sports enrollments, how are they looking? Up or down? I mean, my kids are playing soccer right now, so it seems like it's packed, but are they pretty consistent or?
Yeah, um, I think maybe they are slightly lower, but they're still, it's not like anything that's a...
Nothing drastic.
Nothing drastic, correct. Yeah.
Okay. And it seems like we got really nice soccer uniforms, which is kind of cool. So, that was nice this year. Nice touch. Okay, Development Services. I know we're going to talk about parking later, so I'm not going to talk about that, but the RFQ, how's that going?
I haven't really checked the status lately, but we haven't been receiving any questions. When we first put it out, the first two weeks or so, we were getting, uh, a lot of questions being asked. Um, and I think for the most part, most of them have been answered because we answer them publicly on the listserv. So, if they have the same question, it's posted there for the answer. So, the closing date is September seventeenth. But since then, um, we, we haven't had any...
How many we got?
Any issues. Uh, we haven't received anything yet.
No, but I mean, how many, I know you said we had like five or so people that were interested, developers. Is that kind of still the same number?
I, I'm not aware of any of them not moving forward.
Not moving forward?
Yeah, at this time.
We haven't received any...
They haven't said anything, but we haven't received any proposals either.
But this isn't that stage, right?
We've had the inquiries, but no proposals.
The proposal will be after the RFQ closes.
They're due by the, by the seventeenth.
Oh, they're due by the seventeenth.
Yeah, and so what typically happens when you put out a request for proposals or qualifications, most people will submit them the last day. That's usually what happens.
And it was September seventeenth, correct?
September seventeenth.
Is there probably planning and doing things like that?
Yeah, in case they want to make modifications or somebody else asks questions, they're able to make changes to their...
Okay, well, that's good to know. So, on the last day, we'll know more, I guess.
Yeah, on, on that day, I think we have the following meeting the next Monday, which is the twentieth, and I'll be able to let you know how many came in.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, um, City Land out there with the orchard, I know, when is that lease coming due again?
It'll be up at the end of the year.
And when are we going to have to decide to replant or be done with that?
Um, here soon, because when they, once they harvest this year, which is September, October-ish, then that would be their planting stages, probably sooner than later.
Okay, so that's definitely going to come up?
Correct.
Okay. How about the Municipal Services Review? Is that still on schedule for January, I think you said?
It is. Um, we're still working on obtaining some information, um, for the consultant, but yes, it is still on schedule.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the Building Department, NG progress. How is, how are we doing with that?
Um, we're still waiting for solar panels, uh, water meter switch outs are to start the end, well, beginning of September.
Are they on schedule or are they behind schedule?
Uh, the modern, the water meter swap out, we really thought would be sooner. We thought it would already be done by now.
All the water meters?
Yeah.
In town?
Uh-huh, but they, um...
They done any?
Huh?
They done any?
No, they haven't, because they were waiting for parts. They, because the meters were backordered. I don't know, the chips in them or something to that matter, but COVID seemed to have affected the meters along with the solar panels.
Okay.
The mask getting away.
Thank you. Uh, Public Works, uh, the bathroom at Hogan Field. Where are we at with that?
We got approval from the state for our project. I have put the order into the pre-manufactured builder, um, and we have gotten some submittals from them. In talking with them, I did get a rough schedule from them. They, they, they think like their timeline, based on their timeline, the building's in the queue. We have to respond with some of the, um, details. But March or April of next year is when they anticipate that it would be being placed.
Okay, thank you. This is probably something for Justin, who's hopefully on the line, but, uh, the trees and the sidewalks, and we addressed that a little bit, but we didn't go all the way. There are still trees that are pushing up sidewalks around town, some just on the other side here of, of First Street. And I think that's something we shouldn't let go. We should continue looking at that to, you know, take those trees out, do what we did in front of, on McHenry. I think that looks nice and I think that's functional.
We did, um, put some of that in the budget this year.
Okay, very good. Uh, the water. How are, is the new well with, with that, we had blackwater drill, is that up and running? Is that good to go?
We didn't have the, we haven't had the new well drilled yet. We were waiting for the state to approve our funding, which last contact with them was that they should be issuing funding in September. So, we're waiting for the state approval on the funding. Based on the timeline, we had to wait for the new funding year, and so we're waiting for September for the funding. And once the state releases funding to us, then we'll go out for bid for the, um, the well.
Okay, thank you for that. Are all the wells running right now? I know we have like, what do we have, six?
We have four.
Four? Are they all running? Because it's so hot out. Are we running like full maxed out right now?
Justin can answer that one.
Justin, can you hear us?
All right, I'll just move on. It's okay. The, um, SSJID Pipeline Study with Pace, where are we at with that?
We have been working with Pace on that and going through. He has, I think, he came back to us with some plans and then talking with our chief water operator, going back and forth, um, we refined it some more. So, we are setting up a conference call with him to refine what we've come to an agreement on. And then I think he's going to potentially, um, inquire with SSJID to make sure that they are good with that. And then, um, but we can bring it to the council before we go to SSJID and, but it's, it's right there at the end there.
Okay, great. The reason I'm bringing that up is, I mean, we were throwing out all kinds of crazy numbers, $10 million to do it, or I heard, you know, it could be half of that, so I just really want to see what that study comes back with so we can actually evaluate that project. Moving on, wastewater treatment plant. How is the plant doing? Justin?
So, hold on just a minute. Chris?
You can barely hear him.
Yeah, he's on the laptop.
So, the sound is not coming from go-to meeting over the speakers. Did I do something wrong?
Throw him on speakerphone.
I didn't know. They're news. Oh, they're Samsung, too. Look at that.
Because this is, yeah, I'm just playing show.
They're new monitors.
Yeah, they look very expensive.
Justin, can you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Mr. Crummich, let me answer your first question about the wells. All four wells are opable and have the capable of running, but we are mainly using our well three A. There are on times throughout the day when it's peaking at a hundred and three or four degrees where, um, two of them will come on at the same time. But, uh, we're mainly still using one of our well sites at three A.
So, we got three other ones that are, we're not using, but we could use, so.
Yeah, just not being used full time. They are being used slightly throughout the day. Just three A is our basically twenty-four hour well right now.
Okay, thank you. And then the wastewater plant?
Yeah, as far as the wastewater treatment plant, as far as, um, the flow coming down from the industries, it's been a pretty successful season so far mechanically. We are having a small, slight issue with seepage, um, still trying to exit out of Pond Four into the adjacent property next to us on the east. But everything is still being contained, um, and we're still able to flow through Pond Four. Our odors have been well. I don't want to jinx that. Our DLs have been fantastic. So, right now, things are going fairly smooth for what we have working with down there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to save a couple of these ones. Uh, the projects, um, how's Lear Village doing?
We really haven't had, um, it is moving forward. You do see some...
Improvements.
Improvements being done. Um, nothing that I'm aware of has been called in recently, but he is within his permit times and has those permits issued and, and paid for to be able to move forward, so.
One adjacent building has been wrapped and ready for stucco.
Yeah, there is one that's, uh, been wrapped, repainted, and, and then, um, we did receive, uh, fire sprinklers on a, on one of the other buildings to move forward. So, he is, he is moving forward.
All right, thank you. I guess that concludes staff communication.
Is there anyone else?
I do have a couple of things, unless you guys have more to ask.
Gentlemen, do you guys have any more to add?
Yes.
No, you may go, Tammy.
Okay, so just a reminder, we are going to have a special meeting next Monday night regarding the Jolton, um, petition for extraordinary, uh, conditions and a, a potential rate increase. And then, secondly, the Citywide Yard Sale is held the first Saturday of October. Last year, the city did not promote the event, um, but there were local residents that put their own map together and, and publicized it through social media. So, staff is, um, asking council if they want us to continue to promote the Citywide Yard Sale. We typically advertise in the newspaper and radio. We charge $5 for those that want to be on the map. We then distribute to the maps to local businesses and make them available at City Hall. The last time that we did it in 2019, um, we spent about $300 for advertising and paper. That doesn't include the staff time that's needed to put it all together. So, we're just looking for some direction if we want the city to continue to do it or how we want to proceed with that.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Did you get any feedback from the community when we didn't do it?
I mean, based on social media, the, the guy that put the map together, everybody's, I mean, the event went on without us. I didn't, I didn't get any specific feedback to myself. I just saw what was on social media.
So, it cost the city, how much in advertising?
It's about $300.
So, I know personally for that, uh, you know, my business benefits tremendously during that day, and I can only speak to other businesses. And so, for $300, the city probably sees a huge return just on informing people, come to town, do the yard sale. And, um, so I'm not trying to make it personal, but I'm saying for other people who may benefit, for 300 bucks, I think we should advertise.
And the, the $5 charge for advertising, does that offset the 300 or?
It, it offsets our hard costs. It doesn't offset like the staff time that is involved in it.
No, yeah, I understand. Your last year's went really well with, it's driving me nuts, the name of the gentleman. I gotta look that up again. Who actually took the bull by the horns and handled the map, and I know that, you know, most people, most people are going to be downloading it. So, that's why I don't know how many, how many people are actually going to be going to City Hall to pick up a map.
Well, and that's the other thing, like if you do want us to promote it, do we make it only electronic this time instead of having to do all the printing of the paper? I mean, because the, the hard cost of the paper does, I didn't include what it costs us to run the copies on the copy machine, right? And I want to say we probably do somewhere in the range of two to 300 copies of the maps when we do them.
I think it was promoted electronically last year, and I think it went over really well. And, yeah, would save, you know, a couple bucks, not that it's a lot of money. But, you know, then again, I mean, how many houses are on that map versus how many houses participate, you know?
Right, right.
Why is it many? I don't know. I, I gotta feel this number like that.
I'd be in favor of running off the paper copies. I don't think it's a huge expense. I think the benefit outweighs it. And I think people like to have something in their hand as opposed to maybe just looking at their phone or, or whatever it is. That's just my opinion.
Tammy, you need a consensus or a vote or anything?
Just need, yeah, consensus, direction.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Anybody oppose it? There's your consensus. Nobody opposes it.
Okey-dokey.
Okay.
What time's the special meeting? Is it on the 23rd?
Yes, the 23rd at seven o'clock.
Okay.
Twenty-third, seven o'clock. Ooh. Okay.
And that's all I have?
That's all you have. We're going to go back.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I have got a couple things I want you guys to be aware of.
Okay.
Couple things, Park Feet, just it didn't make it into, you won't see it till the next report, but I want you to be aware now that, one, if it wasn't for the efficiency of our city manager, the cornhole tournament, I couldn't figure it out. She did an excellent job keeping that bracket straight. I don't know how it happened. Every year, we always go back to Tammy. I want a special thanks out to the owners of the Valley Inn. I want to publicly state it. They did an excellent job. They brought in their own security. They maintained a peaceful, pleasant, party-like atmosphere that fit right in with Park Feet, which I know the turnout wasn't exactly what we hoped it would be, but it reminded me of 1974, nice, quiet, all family-oriented. Speaking of Park Feet, uh, hats off to Justin's crew. I don't know how many times they unlocked the library for us because we managed to lock ourselves out of there. I don't know how many times. That would be Sal, Luis, and Joe.
They did a fine job of taking care of the garbage cans, I noticed. Every time we see like, oh, it looks like we need to get that empty. Turn around, it's gone, it's empty. They were in and out. They were efficient. It was great.
Yes, they did. Um, we didn't get off unscathed, though. We did end up with three arrests. Two were taken for fighting in public. One had a switchblade, obviously a juvenile, so it got a little weird. The other one was intoxicated, plus involved in a mutual combat fight. She was arrested also. And one for public intoxication, who kind of tried to hug Sergeant Flores. That being said, I want to give, I want to give some props out to my, both my sergeants, Sergeant Flores and Sergeant Hargraves. They put an ops plan together. I know on paper, we look like we're running deep, full staff, lots of cops, when in fact, we're kind of shorthanded. They managed to put all that together and get it flawlessly executed, even though it was hot and we almost lost Gus to the hug. Which brings me to the parade. One thing I will say about the parade, Gracie Marks, uh, special thanks for, I gave her the green light to do a burnout in that car she was driving. By the way, she looked good in that car. But she didn't do it. It's excellent. Again, Sergeant Hargraves put, uh, that ops plan together, lost more personnel that day due to vacation, sick leave, and some other stuff. Brings me around to COVID scare. We had one out of four that, sorry, C-word, but out of four that kind of got me freaked out, down to one, it actually may have been exposed. We're still waiting. Last but not least, uh, again, city manager forwarded me some complaints. I contacted those people and spoke with them, just so you're aware. I've got some things up my sleeve I'm going to try, um, one of which got executed tonight. Officer Halverson went over to the safety briefing at Heinz and advised him about the truck. He also has a contact for the trucking firm, which I believe is Central Valley, and he's contacting them. That was put together by Sergeant Flores. And that's all I have for now.
Very good, thank you. Boy, we've had a lot of good information. All right, before we move back to where we missed the presentation, is there anything you want to add before we move back to that?
I'm good.
You're good, you're good, you're good? We're all good. Okay. We're going to have a presentation this evening, and the gentleman who we're giving to has shown up. And if you would be so kind, John, to come to the podium.
I can't turn it.
Well, John, before I read the, uh, standard procedure here, I'm going to talk about you a little bit, all right? I met John how many years ago, John? Say, ten?
Oh, a little more than that, I think.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, John came to our community and, uh, normally people come to our community, they come here and nobody notices. Well, John came and become part of this community in a way most people never achieve. He's been instrumental in so many different things within the Lions Club. John was, uh, very instrumental in keeping the car show alive as long as it lived and busting his tail, worked hard. He's been in the Lions Club doing so many amazing things. He gives unselfishly, and he's just a all-around pretty neat guy. It's my pleasure, John, to have you here tonight, to be able to give you some recognition for all the good things you've done for this community. Now, I'll read this little standard thing here for you. It says here, "The certificate of special recognition is awarded to John Solven in honor of his community service acts over the course of many decades." Okay. I comment, "I recommend you for volunteering time in the community events like Park Feet, Christmas on Main Street, Escalon Lions Car Show. Your commitment to the Escalon Lions Club, your diligence and thoughtfulness, character shines through all that know you, and I am pleased to present this certificate to you, Mayor Ed Als." Okay. John, I'm going to give you this, but I want you to talk a little bit. I want you to tell me what inspired you to become involved in our community, being somebody who never grew up here, but yet you blended in so nicely. You, you pretty much resemble a lot of the people that give to him about the town. And I want to thank you personally.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you. Well, I appreciate the award very much, and I'm sorry for being late. My wife put the notes in her purse, and then we never transferred it to the main calendar, so I must apologize. When I moved to, uh, Escalon, I wanted to get involved in something to give to the community. When I was in the fire department, I did a lot of projects similar to what we do here. And, uh, so I wanted to continue that for the community, and I don't remember why I picked the Lions. I think it was because it was the one that stood out the most and seemed to do the most for the community. I could be wrong, but that's how I felt at the time. So, I was lucky enough to get in the Lions, and there you are.
You've done an amazing amount of work in the Lions Club, John. I can attest to that, and I think most of us up here that know about you can attest to that. It's, it's, it's such a pleasure to have somebody who's not really homegrown, who comes to our community with the same interest and love that you gave to this community. I just, uh, I'm, I'm just so thankful people like you come here and do this.
Well, thank you, and I, thanks for thanking. It was, I enjoy the community. What can I say?
You're a lot of fun, John.
Yeah, I have a good time, and it's been good to me, so I hope to continue on.
I hope so, too, John. I hope you stay in the Lions and help us keep going.
Yes, sir.
Tell you what, the impact you've already made in this community is beyond words. You know, the, the, with the car crews and the scholarships raised and the people's lives that have been influenced. You'll never know how big your impact was here. It's been big.
It's been good. I've, I've had a good time doing it and hope to continue on as long as I'm still above ground, you know?
There you have it.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, John. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that's on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city on any item not on the agenda that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is at the discretion, discretionary decision made by the mayor. All right, here's an opportunity for anyone out there in the audience who has something on their mind they'd like to get off or talk about something that's on here, and we have five minutes. Just give us your name, please.
Hi, I'm Andre Ansheer. Uh, I own this little studio here in town, the Dance Studio, on the corner of First and Center Street, and I know we're talking about parking tonight, so I just wanted to kind of touch base with you. Just wanted to find out when those parking signs would be removed on First so that we can actually get parking going there. You guys had your engineer go out there and confirm that there's at least three parking spots that could be put there. And so, my business is back in full swing, and just wondering when that will take place. Also, there's, um...
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. So, I'm sorry to interrupt, but because we have that for a discussion item, you really should, like, we can address it if you come up when we get to the discussion item.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but we're gonna bring it back up, and when we can actually respond to you then.
Okay.
All right?
Sounds good.
Sorry about that.
If you have something... You've added any weight, then...
Yeah, if you have something else besides the parking, you can relay that to the council. But otherwise, when we get to item five, we'll be particular to that matter.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and speak on any item? Okay, it doesn't look like we're in the evening. All right, well, I don't see anyone else, so we're gonna close it and bring it back to the council. All right, now that'll bring us on to the next item. We have a public hearing that says none. Okay, no public hearings. Administrative matters. Authority, let's see, authorize the city manager to execute the parking deed restrictions with similar, with...
Shanlar.
Shanlar.
Shanlar Enterprise LLC. Staff.
Do you want me to present?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, maybe we want to take the second, the next item before this item.
First, okay, let's do that.
It's kind of all touches on each other.
Sure.
The bigger picture, maybe, will lay the foundation for the smaller picture, right?
As you wish. All right, then we'll be moving down to item number five first, and we'll come back to item number four. Staff.
One sec. Okay, where is my five here?
Number five is discussing the parking along First Street and Center Street.
Correct.
Okay.
Just got all my pages stuck together here.
It's okay. We got time. We're not going anywhere.
Geez, where are you?
Five, here we go. Okay. So, as discussed at the last meeting, the city engineer evaluated the areas of Center Street and First Street to see if there was any ability to provide additional parking. Upon evaluation, it was determined that three additional spaces could be provided along the south side of First Street between McHenry Avenue and Center Street. As explained during the meeting, the turning lane prevents the addition of parking along the north side of First Street. There was also discussion at the last meeting about the parking along, at the last meeting, about the parking along Center Street. Currently, there are existing sidewalks on both sides of Center Street, but the west side lacks a gutter, and the east side has no curb or gutter. Staff asked the city engineer to provide cost estimates for reconstructing Center Street to address these items between First Street and Roosevelt Avenue. This potential street project would include the removal of all of the street trees, new curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and new street pavement. These improvements could potentially widen Center Street up to an additional 10 feet in various areas, as well as potentially add additional street parking in areas where the street trees may currently prevent it. So attached to this was a, is a aerial of the area where those three parking spaces are located. And once that is a consensus of council, we can move forward with adding those into the street and removing all the signage that's currently there that says no parking. That was Exhibit A, and then Exhibit B is the cost estimate, which is the Center Street rehabilitation or reconstruction project. And we do have all of the items listed in there, including ADA improvements, storm drain improvements, and the demolition, which would also include the tree removal. And if you have any questions, we're gonna answer them.
Of this 264,000, do we have money that is in the budget set aside for this type of a project?
We don't, we don't have this particular project set aside in the budget at this time. It would take time for the engineer to put all the plans together, to go out to bid.
Good six months.
It could be a future project for next fiscal year.
Okay, good. So we're looking anywhere from six months to a year?
Well, I think you're probably looking at more like a year to 18 months before the project would be.
Okay. And at that time, we could probably find funding somewhere along the line?
There are some street fundings, yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, any other questions?
Yeah, is there any estimate necessary? How many, it says, "As well as potentially add some additional street parking in areas where the street trees may currently prevent it." Do we have any ideas to, for 240, 260,000, how many parking spots we're gonna be getting? We could get...
Four to six spaces.
Four to six spaces.
Correct, depending on the size of the car.
That's not a good ROI.
And that's mostly in the areas that currently have those large street trees. Some people are able to squeeze their car into there, but usually people with larger vehicles aren't trying to park there because you'd stick too far out or go in between trees. But altogether, it should get us at least four, if not six, additional parking spaces on Center Street.
Okay. So I wonder if it might be easier at the moment just to go after the low-hanging fruit, and that's, you know, giving our blessing on the signage on First Street, yeah.
Well, that's an easy one, I think, like...
That's a no-brainer.
Like, that one, I think, would be easy to go through, but, you know, you could, we could still explore because Center Street needs improvement, and so does Roosevelt. Both of those two streets are streets that are, you know, not in the greatest condition. I don't know where they're at on our pavement listing in regards to when they would be coming up, but I know that they're both there on our list.
There's no way this project would qualify like anywhere under like Measure K or anything like that as a potential granted project?
Yeah, I mean, some of our Measure K monies go to streets that we could use for it. I mean, we use Measure K for other... So what our common practice is on a street rehabilitation project is we're looking where our water lines are that need to be replaced. So we're typically doing a water line, and we're doing a street reconstruct at the same time because you have to tear the street up for the water line, so we're trying to address those in that order. We haven't really gone out just to do a street rehabilitation recently without having to do the water lines in it, so... And I'm not sure where this, where Center or Roosevelt would fall in lines in regards to the water lines or what kind of lines are there. So it could be potential, it would be a water and a street project.
That one falls on the priority list, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
That all falls on.
On this map, you're showing the parking on one side of the street only or both sides?
Only on the one side of the street.
The west side.
Yes.
And they're gonna be...
Well, I guess it's really the south side.
Whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
All right.
On this map.
One closest to McHenry.
Yes.
Got it.
Well...
I'm gonna tell him.
The one on the same side as Powerhouse.
Wait a minute, I'm talking about the...
We're not talking about the same thing here.
Okay.
I'm talking about Center Street.
Well, Center Street, it would be the whole street. It would be both sides of the street.
Both sides.
Between Roosevelt and First Street.
Yes.
And are the parking gonna be parallel, or are they gonna be diagonal, or where they...
Parallel.
It'd be parallel, yeah.
So what am I looking at here?
That's the parking lot at the...
Oh, that's the other one, okay. I got it, thanks. That's not the one I was looking for. All right, so the big number on the, that proposal is the tree removal, it looks like, huh? I mean, that, and what was the other one, the 110?
Well, the...
ADA ramps is not exactly...
The place in Rock, Salt, the road is 110, and then the other one's 30 is the sidewalk. And then the, so the trees are third place.
Yeah.
All right. Those are monster trees. I'm surprised you get them out for 20 grand.
Well, and also know...
These are estimates at the current moment.
Yeah.
Right.
Could be worse.
If you're talking about return on investment, Councilmember Bellinger, I know we're gonna talk about a couple other things a little later on that might be, relatively speaking, now a lot more attractive in terms of ROI.
In terms of what?
Return on investment. We're gonna get to that a little later on.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, so any more discussion in this, gentlemen?
So you just need a consensus for the three spots on First Street, right?
Right, after public comment. And now we're gonna have public comment.
And I do have a question about what kind of numbers are we talking about are needed in that area for Powerhouse? What kind of, what are the numbers of parking stalls that would be beneficial? Sure.
So on July 19th, when I came forward to you first, I was explaining the breakdown of how many clients I have per hour. And so I allow about eight to 10 students in my class, and I have two rooms. So that's roughly 16 to 20 cars per hour, dropping off, picking up, and parking to observe. So I really would like to focus on what we can do, maybe on the corner of First and McHenry, as far as putting a public parking lot, since we don't have one in that area at all whatsoever. And another thing that I thought about these last two weeks is I could have the potential of having two cars right in front of my building, but there's a red curb on half of my, the front of my building, so that, and my clients are respective of that red curb. It's pretty faded, but I was hoping that that also could grant access to an extra parking spot because right now I only have one car that can park in front of my building. And so, yes, my main focus would be on the corner of First and McHenry, since, you know, I would need way more than four parking spots on Center Street. And if we could address the, if we can address the alley issue, if you guys can grant us access to that, as of right now, you know, it's just, it's a really sensitive subject for me as I still get called on, but the other people can park there. So there was just a report made on me last week, and so it's just been a really frustrating process, but that's all I have to say.
Chief, the red on the corner, is that for clearance to be able to get in and out of that intersection?
It's more for fire. It's not for us.
It's more for the fire department.
I would check with fire, but I...
Okay.
Okay, now we'll open up the, Mark, are you in a public hearing right now?
Public comments for this agenda item is what you...
Public comment, yes. Is there any...
Anybody else?
And there would like to speak on this matter. Okay, we're gonna close the public comment, come back to the council. Gentlemen, what do you like to do?
Those three spots, I mean, yeah, if that's what you're looking for consensus-wise at this point, yeah, I'm all for it.
Same here.
You mean a vote or consensus?
Consensus, right?
The, I don't know. Consensus, direction, yeah.
Okay, anybody against it? Okay, so it's consensus. We got it.
Justin, how, how long do you, how long do you think before we could potentially address that area for those three spots? I don't know what your schedule is like right now.
Let me get with Bill on Thursday. I think at some point next week, we should be able to address it. I just need to make sure that we don't need to move any concrete or anything else out of the, as long as it fits just the math, a few things out in painting. I should be able to get it done by end of next week for sure.
Okay, so probably we'll just say like within the next two weeks, then?
Yes, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. On these parking spots on First Street that we're making available, are there gonna be any time restrictions in when they can park or can't park? And how long they can park?
No, we're not doing time restrictions.
Whoever comes first can park there?
Correct.
Are we allowing overnight parking?
On this, we don't have anything in that area regarding overnight parking.
So that it can park overnight?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, what's the maximum you can park there without getting noticed by the police department? 72 hours, just to make it clear for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, 72 hours your max. You might get to park there, but 72 hours is your max. All right, good enough.
And we're gonna look at the red curb.
Tim, can you roll that up to the front of Powerhouse?
It's hard to see. You can't see it here, and she's right. It is pretty faded on that corner. I know that the corners primarily, they do it for visual because of the stop sign, especially because that stop bar looks like it sets back quite a ways. So we'll have the engineer evaluate it. Maybe, I don't know if we can shorten it up at all, but we can look at it. Because these little markings are a parking stall, and that's what we would be doing down here.
Let me ask a question, Andreon. Are your parents avoiding that entire red curb altogether, or are they at least dropping the kiddos off there?
They're avoiding it altogether. They're very respectful of that area.
So I guess that could be something we could consider is doing a green curb, which is like 15-minute parking.
It's commercial.
And then that way, they could use it for a drop-off and not, it wouldn't necessarily give another parking spot, but it would give a drop-off spot.
Makes sense.
Would that be the preference, or would it, would the parking stall be the...
I mean, I'll take, I'll take whatever I can get, but if the 15 minutes is the best of the two, then I will work with that. If they can be a permanent parking spot, then I will also take that.
If it were a permanent parking place, then would you have, would they be able to dump the kids off?
Well, they drop off and pick up on Center Street.
On Center Street?
Because the First Street is extremely busy, and it's not something...
Not safe. Okay.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
Okay.
All right, so we'll have the engineer and Public Works reevaluate that section there and base it on safety regarding that intersection at Center Street there.
Okay, then. Are we ready to go back to item number four? Ready, guys? Item number four? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So the other part of your question was the parking lot at the corner of First and McHenry.
Yes, and/or the alleys. I would like to see...
Okay, so we don't own that parcel on the corner, and that's, somebody owns that. I think there's actually two parcels there that are owned by other people, and there are, I believe there's some plans that have been talked about for that corner.
If I may, Councilmember, that's a...
There's another item for that.
It's an item.
It's another item.
Item six is exactly that, okay.
So we'll continue to address that on the next item. For the alleyway, are we gonna address that?
So the alleyway is a tough one. So recently, alleyways are not supposed to be parked in. There's not a clear path of travel there for ingress, egress on that, so you can't, you can't really promote parking. We don't, we don't allow parking, we're not supposed to allow parking in our alleyways. There was the exception with the transmission shop, and they actually came to the council and asked the council to keep their two storage containers there because they said they had their parking under control. And that has been very apparent recently that it's not. And staff has not reached out to them. So if council would like us to reach out to them and reiterate that they shouldn't be parking in the alley, we can do that. They're parking on the vacant lots right now. But, I mean, we need the support of the council on how to move forward with that.
Well, if you're gonna restrict Transmission Shop from parking, that means nobody else is gonna park there, period.
Correct.
Well...
So that is, that's them parking. I noticed the other day, a whole bunch of cars were parked on the open...
On the vacant lots?
Right.
Yes.
Which, I mean, I don't know if they have permission to park there or not. That's probably not our problem, I guess.
They do have permission.
By the way, is it Escalon, or is it owned, it's sold by somebody right now?
Private.
Private.
It's a private property that, yeah.
So they have permission for me to...
They do have permission.
Do they?
I don't know.
He told me he did. He talked to the owner. The owner was a liquor store in town. His name is Singh.
Right.
Mr. Singh has given him permission to temporarily park his vehicles there.
He's the one right on the corner.
I don't think he's on the, he has two lots.
He's got both of them.
Yeah, he does. He owns both of them.
And he's in the process of building on them.
Right. Well, we've had inquiries about it, so we're assuming, we're assuming that, too.
So the idea is that he's not parking anything in the alley now. He's parking that beyond that.
He's parking in the alleyway.
Parking in the alleyway as well.
Every other day or every day, and the call that I got this week is that I had a client who was slightly blocking the alleyway with the notes of their vehicle, and I was called on for that, but he gets to park there, and they don't get called on for that. And my business is in...
To your neighbors, I love it.
I think that's where we're gonna run into a consistency issue, you know, if he can park in the alley, you know, but if nobody else can, I mean...
I don't believe anybody, I don't believe anybody should be parking in the alley. It blocks the ability for fire and rescue to get in there as needed if there's an issue with those buildings. That's why the alley's there. It's supposed to be clear. But that's my opinion.
I mean, it looked like you had plenty of cars out, and it looked like there were plenty of room in, you know, Mr. Singh's property. And now, I'm not trying to suggest, you know, everybody talk to Mr. Singh now, but, yeah, I don't know. I think if we're consistent, we ought to keep that alley open. I don't know how we're gonna justify it any other way.
I'm not one to call and report them, but obviously they're the ones reporting me, and I'm not even the one parking. So I just, it's a frustrating process for me. I'm not gonna be the one calling on them every day. If not being reinforced, then it's, you know, I don't know.
Are there no, is there a sign that says no parking, or is this kind of assumed?
There is no signs in the, in the alleys right now. It is in our code. We have started putting those signs in some alleys.
This particular one?
This one, we have not put a sign up in there at this time.
Do the police in town go and write tickets for people there if they're parked there?
We will.
We don't now.
If we receive a complaint, I'd have to go check the call log to see the complaints that were called in, but we don't, we don't take it on to the business owner. We take it on the vehicle owner.
Right.
So we would never address the business owner about it.
I'm just trying to figure out what we're supposed to do. I mean, you know, we're not supposed to park there, and the police are doing the best they can to monitor it, and people still...
If we're gonna do that for one alley, we'll do it for all.
Yeah, and we haven't reached out to the business.
Oh, right.
Because, again, I just need to make sure that the council supports that action.
Yeah, reach out to the business to ensure that they're following the law?
That they're not parking in the alley, correct?
I mean, yeah, I'm in favor of reaching out to the business.
Yeah, I mean, same here, we just, we gotta be consistent, you know?
If Justin's gonna be putting signs up, can we tag that on there also to put a new parking sign?
You can.
Yeah.
The neat thing with the alleyways, or the thing with the alleyways, is you don't need to put up signs. It's one of those few parking codes that is implied. There's several state parking codes that imply similar area, if, just as if there's missing street signs in residential areas, it's automatically twenty-five. Any alleyway, unless otherwise posted, is automatically fifty mile per hour speeds, and they don't need to be posted. So you don't need to put posting signs up. Of course, the city can if it would like to emphasize trouble areas, if we want to put a sign up there. And of course, probably is good practice to first reach out to the Transmission Shop or whichever shops around there and say, we know there's been parking, but now it's gonna be enforced and there's no longer parking, well, there's no, you know, we'll be enforcing, the city will be enforcing.
Yeah, either we let everybody park there and don't do anything, or we say, nobody can park here because that's not what you're allowed to do according to the city code and the laws and things, and so, of course, we have to enforce it on everybody.
In this case, you might wanna have a sign or two, I mean, you hate to do it, but again...
We can, we can reach out to the business first, and then we can take care of signs.
What's the possibility of putting parking stalls in there?
In the alleyway? I mean, you probably talked to the engineer, again, you're, it's a one-way path of travel for, to the roadway. So, you're, you're gonna pull in and park, and you can't turn around unless you go to a private property, so...
Just a moment, that alley, as it goes towards McHenry, does not tee off or go straight? It doesn't tee, isn't there an alley behind those buildings that goes left, goes north to south?
No.
So it just dead ends?
It dead ends at McHenry, I believe.
So we don't have a road cut in for that?
Correct, there is no driveway there.
So when the development of those properties is gonna take place, they cannot build in that easement, is what you're saying?
That is correct, and they are aware of that.
Okay, when they're doing that building, are we gonna cut in that curve?
No, this is...
Well, that depends upon what their layout is, they can cut in a curb there for their parking lot, but that would be up to the, the property owner. We have an easement there for the, for the area.
They would propose the locations of their driveways.
I just thought it was a tee, I didn't realize it went straight out. An issue with the setback?
Don't we have services in those alleys?
They have a sewer line.
Right. Which, they could, they can put pavement over it, but they couldn't put a structure.
Wasn't one of the issues with that lot, with the widening of McHenry, that created some issues with access? So we, you can't necessarily...
Off Roosevelt.
Cut a curb, cut the curb to a entryway or exit from a driveway.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I, I didn't hear what you're saying.
So between First and Roosevelt, that, I thought one of the issues with that property is it became landlocked with the widening of McHenry.
Which property?
The, the one bordering McHenry, the old map property.
So, okay, McHenry and First.
First, so that, I thought when, with the widening of McHenry, it became landlocked. So they didn't have access to that lot because of the light, sight lines or line of sight, turning movements and everything else.
By the, sign over here by the lights. Why couldn't we swap that land and put that alley going from north to south?
Because our utilities are already in the, in the alley, yes.
Okay.
I have a, so, this alley, right, runs right down here, there's, there's no fences, it's not really an alley, it's just an alley on the map.
There are, there are fences down here where the residential are.
Well, right, but all the way out here.
Correct.
And so, I know, I think we're gonna talk about this, maybe we're talking about it now, it might be another item, but these parcels, this really makes this a terrible spot for a property owner because you've got this weird easement down the middle of your property that makes it difficult, right? So, I'm just spitballing here, but maybe we could, if, if, you know, with easements and government land, sometimes you can, maybe we can get rid of this alley, and then, you know, a, a part of the deal would be that the property owner would, you know, maybe put some parking in there, so I'm, you know what I'm saying?
I think that it's...
You just can't put a structure there.
We have utilities there, that's why the easement is there, because there's utilities already in the ground. So, the, the property owner could potentially pave over it, but they could not put a structure over it.
There you go, why don't we make that like a parking lot, part of, and then work a deal with the owners that we could put the alley the other direction, and leave that a parking lot, a part of a parking lot.
Now we're swerving on...
Well, that's not really wide enough to be a parking lot for where our easement is.
I don't know the layout of the new construction, but my point is this, if it's possible to swap that land and include it in a parking project, and able to gain an alley that goes north to south, it might be worth looking into if we could.
But our infrastructure is already in the ground, that's why there's an easement, so you're talking about moving the infrastructure?
No, that's not what I said, what I said was, why don't we allow them to pave over the top of it as a parking area?
You'll be said we could, it could.
You can already do that.
Okay, so, but it's not really a parking, it'll be a street or an alley, which you can't park.
It could be part of his parking lot.
Yeah, include his part of his parking lot in consideration for allowing us to go along the back of those property lines, to put an alley in there.
Why would we need the alley at the back of the property lines then?
Because we're not gonna cut it into McHenry because of the proximity to the intersection. Look at where it is right now, do you think we could put a, an exit there or an entrance there?
We wouldn't do it.
So I think that's, I think that was the problem with the, with the widening project, is it landlocked that parcel.
Exactly.
So they would need access onto that property, if he owns both parcels now, he could theoretically come in off of Roosevelt, have access to all that property.
Right.
Right.
So if he were to put a, some sort of a parking area or driveway off of Roosevelt towards the utility easement or the alleyway, that would give us access.
Right.
If, if I may, we're, we're essentially on item six, so we might...
Well, we're addressing the alley portion of it, but I mean, I think that what we're talking about is a lot more in-depth because you're, you're gonna have to understand what that property owner's intentions are for the property to be able to even...
Can we agree he's not gonna part, build a building on that?
Well, he's gonna be restricted, he can't do that.
There you go.
But getting back to item five is what we were talking about, the last thing needed was to, you needed the consensus to reach out to the Transmission Shop owner or whoever and just say, please don't park in that alley, correct?
Or the homes on the other side of the road as well.
Right.
If anybody's parking there.
That's what you needed to wrap up item five.
We are the same people that told him to park there too, is the problem.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, so now we're gonna go, now we're gonna go back to him and tell him not to park there because we have...
We didn't tell him to park in the alley.
We told him he could use the alley.
Use is different than park.
On his side?
I'm sorry?
On his side of, of center, on the other side...
I don't recall that, I don't recall that, but at any rate, we've had a dilemma there because he's lost every parking spot he had before because of the wall we built there.
Get an option to take out some storage containers?
Those were part of his business, and he's, you know, why are we displacing business and causing all this hassle?
I think what we're trying to do, we're trying to create a balance with all the businesses down there, some them out parking, some don't have parking, so we're trying to find a way to get as close as we can, and unfortunately, in the alley's case, we're essentially the referee. So...
The bottom line is the property owners down there don't have parking.
Correct.
That's the bottom line. And the question is, does City of Esclon have to facilitate it? And that's what we're gonna discuss on item six.
Four and six.
Yeah, four and six, okay.
But to finish up five...
Right, all right, let's finish up five and move on.
And that's why I'm saying, yeah, you may wanna reach out to them, you know? That's my thought, I don't know if Councilmember Trump still agrees.
Well, you guys can have a consensus and do exactly as you choose, if that's the case, is that our consensus here? Gentlemen?
Yes.
We got one, two, three, that's all you need, you got, maybe four. All right, you got four people willing to have you move forward.
Okay, thank you.
And so that'll bring us on, we're gonna go back to five, or are we gonna roll to six?
Four.
Four?
We're gonna go back to four.
Back to four, okay.
You wanna read it and then I'll jump in?
I don't care, either way. Okay. So, tonight we're looking for authorization for the city manager to execute the parking deed restriction with Chanlar Enterprises LLC. In February of 2020, the city council adopted a summary vacation and approved the purchase and sell agreement with Chanlar Enterprises for the area known as Prospect. Chanlar proposed improvements to the area of Prospect and the lumberyard site, including remodeling of the existing lumberyard building, two new buildings, landscaping, sidewalks, fencing, underground storm drain facilities, parking lot lighting, and public parking. These improvements were made, were to be made in three phases, and attached to the staff report is the executed purchase agreement approved by the city council. In the spirit of cooperation and promoting business development within the city, staff in Chanlar Enterprise, the developer negotiated a unique strategy to address parking concerns for the development of the Merchant Yard project. First, the land was the alleyway called Prospect was transferred for $5,000 to the developer in order for the project to achieve the necessary parking requirements for the new development to proceed. In exchange, the developer agreed to restrict via deed the area designated for public parking to both protect and expand the public parking for the neighboring business customers. The developer has agreed to construct a walkway for the public's use from this parking area to First Street. In addition, the developer maintains the parking lot, oversees parking enforcement. The city will thereby see savings in staff time and ongoing and future maintenance costs by not having to maintain or manage the area. These items were some of the main reasons this direction was taken by the city. The developer was permitted to count eight of the public parking spaces towards its parking requirement for the project, has the ability for the businesses in, in the, in his buildings to utilize the parking area and manages the parking lot, which includes limiting the parking hours, while the city maintains its ability to require the developer to maintain the lot for public parking. The city attorney has been in negotiations with the developer concerning the language of the deed restriction in order to complete the deed restriction in accordance with previously approved and executed land purchase agreement. The deed restriction parking agreement was drafted to address the following concerns, neighboring businesses using the public parking for employee parking would limit parking for customers. That solution was to limit the amount of time for parking, such as a two or four hour parking. Note, the time limit, or lack thereof, is at the discretion of the developer in order to allow for the changing of business needs. In short, the agreement would allow the developer at its discretion to remove or change time limits for the parking, for the public parking. Neighboring business owners would contact the developer to address any concerns of parking time limits. The neighboring Transmission Shop using the public parking as storage for their clients' cars, which may be interoperable or, and leaking fluids, the solution was prohibit parking of vehicles that are inoperable, prohibit overnight parking, prohibit parking of vehicles with, that are leaking fluids, and limit the amount of time to the two or four hour parking. In addition, city staff agreed to send out a letter to the surrounding businesses in order to avoid confusion and educate the businesses about the potential restrictions for the public parking. Finally, the city attorney agreed to bring before the city council a resolution for consideration which will further assist the developer to manage the parking lot. So attached to the staff report was the executed purchase agreement and the draft deed restriction parking agreement.
You looked over there, you saw the parking, you saw the signs, two things I'm concerned about. One, you have a parking lot, and that parking lot, there is no handicap access from the parking spaces to the sidewalk. Now, you have to go around, sorry? You have to go around the whole lot to get to the street, correct?
No, I believe there's one handicapped approximately three quarters of the way up in the parking spot, and it...
We're, we're, on the ones that run this, the...
Yeah, I'm only talking about the public parking, there was sixteen spaces.
Right, there's one in the middle, you said?
There's one handicap ADA accessible parking spot there that attaches to the sidewalk that goes to First Street.
My point is, but a ramp, the ramp is what I'm talking about, Mark.
So, so the parking, the ADA parking is towards the middle of the parking lot, and the path of travel goes to the businesses that are adjacent there. So, the ADA parking is more focused towards those businesses than it is towards a public parking area.
So what does a person do that parks there that has a wheelchair?
So, I believe the developer has agreed that he would put the ramp at the, near the, the walkway.
Right, that's an angle, you did, good. I mean, I hate to be a problem, but if I was in a handicap situation, I'd appreciate that ramp.
Can you pull up the map, do you have a map on this, we all see that?
So, oh shoot, I shouldn't label those.
I have another question after this one, we're, we're done discussing this one.
About page ninety-nine on mine, you ever take?
Ninety-nine, dang.
Ninety-nine, ninety-eight?
On mine.
Well, I think that picture is just the...
It was attached to the...
Oh, it's not a picture, picture, sorry.
That doesn't have the parking slots on it.
Okay, that was the old property profile. Yeah. Well, anyway, he's agreed to it, that makes it easy, just do that, and I think that'll solve any problems with, we have a wheelchair.
This is Roosevelt, this is the sidewalk here, there's six spaces here, and there's nine spaces here. And there's a handicap parking in the middle.
There is no access for handicap, for wheelchair.
Where's the current existing handicap?
So what, what you're...
Right here.
That is a very rudimentary drawing, though, of the sixteen handicaps, I mean, the sixteen public parking, right? On the left side is Roosevelt, on the right side is First Street. So that's that one handicapped parking spot that's in the middle of those sixteen spaces. And where it touches the top part of this picture, which is actually the west side, that's the sidewalk that exits to the right towards First Street.
Correct.
So I think that's where, is that where you're indicating, Mayor, we need a ramp from that hand...
Not at that spot there, but to the corner of it.
Right here.
Gotcha, yeah.
It only makes sense. We, I'm surprised we didn't catch that when they reported initially.
And what else, what else you're saying here is, we've discussed with the developer, some of the concerns that have been raised.
Regarding the signage?
Well, right, regarding signage and the time restrictions.
That's part of the signage.
That's been brought up. And what, Mr., or Mr. Grassi with Chanlar, indicated, is what's on the screen here, is to change the signage so that nine of those spaces only says no overnight parking and has no hourly restrictions. And some of them, for this example, he indicated like six spaces could have the two hour limit. This way, it kinda, it's a compromise to allow people to park there all, you know, all day, essentially, whether it's, whether it's the tenants, employees, or the surrounding businesses' employees.
I don't have a problem with two hour parking, the problem I have is that it's two hour parking from seven to seven, okay? That I think's fine, in fact, after seven, it should be left at no terms, no limitation on parking, but have to be out there before midnight.
Correct, and that's the way it is, it is currently drafted.
But the sign doesn't indicate that.
No, the, the sign's just indicating currently, I believe, the hour limitation that's there, and the no overnight parking.
Right, I think it's a little, little confusing. I think it'd be proper to say, two hour parking till seven only, and then after seven to midnight, there is no limit.
I mean, it, it's a standard parking sign that the state, like, there's state standard parking signs, and that's the verbiage that you would find at ninety-nine percent of your parking areas.
Do you understand that verbiage, do you agree with that, I mean, do you think that makes sense, that sign?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it makes any sense.
Can, can I ask a question about the nine spaces with no overnight parking sign? So there's no limit to time there, does that effectively mean that the employees of the development can park their cars in those nine spaces and occupy them for the whole day at that point? In essence, reducing those sixteen spaces that we have use of in and out now, it's down restricted to six plus the handicap? Is that what that does?
Well, yeah, well, yes and no, and this was a suggestion from the developer because it was not only the developer, but we've heard from the surrounding business owners that they actually, their employees would be using, that they would like the employee to be able to use it. So, the developer indicated, fine, let's take off the restrictions of time for nine of those spaces, and it can be used by, well, a member of the public that's gonna be there for more than two hours or for the full day. Yes, it can be used by, by employees of the tenants of that property, as well as employees of the neighboring, in this case, employees of the neighboring businesses. So it's open to anybody to park their...
I see that, but then also businesses parking work trucks there for the whole day, if they don't use them, can occupy a spot, then effectively, those spots are gonna be full, nonstop. First business that opens is gonna park all their employees there, and they're not gonna move till they're done.
And those aren't really retail businesses either, those are businesses that are serving... Those are businesses, service businesses, most of them.
Air conditioning guys are going to park a truck and take a workshop out, and he's never coming back.
Right. You're not going to be there shopping. I mean, he has, the other part of the development requires parking, which he has, seems to have plenty.
Well, they can, that's the same concern with any park, public parking space anywhere. We can't restrict, you know, hey, a parking, a work truck versus a passenger truck.
I understand that.
The, the project was, let's, we're taking away some places where there was public parking, so with this, the developer and this development, let's make sure we keep those and actually expand the amount of public parking that could go there.
I think the two hour parking's fine. I just think that after seven o'clock, it needs to be stated that you can park there longer than two hours with a maximum of midnight.
And maybe council members, when Mr., when the developer comes to speak, they might be able to explain the business needs of the development there a little bit better than I'm doing here.
But here's the thing, I'm making the assumption that you've talked to the businesses around there, developers talked to the businesses around there, and so you've kind of received a consensus as to what's going to be the ideal situation for the businesses that are around there, correct?
Correct.
So I mean, that, that probably ought to be weighted an awful lot in this, I would imagine, you know?
Correct. Thank you. I mean, yes, please.
I have a, did you have something, Jeff? I don't know if you were, I've been cutting you off. So in the original agreement, the purchase agreement, and that we deed restricted these, can you just sum that up again? What was the agreement again?
Simply that-
I heard that he can do whatever he wants and negotiate it with the local properties around him or something.
So there's, there's two documents. The original one that was already executed for the development-
Okay.
-said that space, we're going to give them that property that was Prospect Street-
Right.
-for $5,000, but in exchange, he's going to make those public parking spaces-
Okay.
-and no overnight parking. That was it, with the understanding that more, a more formal actual deed restriction that needs to be recorded would get executed, which is what we're trying to, trying to complete here. So the act, the agreement to date, the land purchase agreement says there's 17 spaces, supposed to be 17 public parking spaces, no overnight parking, and everything else was left up to further discussion. And then, and then the draft actual deed restriction, which is what's in here too, which is what we're trying to work on, the draft agreement itself, it's actually, it says, it's, any parking restrictions are up to, up to the developer based on their business needs. It still has to be public parking, but the developer can change some of the spots from either two to four to six, or no restrictions, and this way the city's not involved in those, what's happening there, and the developer can actually change the time or put no restrictions if he or she wanted to, just as long as they stay public parking spaces. Now-
Okay.
With, in discussions, we suggested two hour parking to address some of their concerns, which is the overnight parking, or the transmission shop, or inoperable cars.
Okay.
So that was the suggestion, but it, in the agreement itself, the proposed deed restricting agreement, the time restrictions are up to the developer.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if you wanted to speak.
Yes, it's a poor decision. I'm Larry Grassi. I just wanted to add to that, that part of that negotiations was, is that with future development of that area, that we did have eight spaces that would go towards that development. Parking spaces, okay, I understand the public parking, but they are, or to cover some of, cover the parkings, the extra parking that would be needed in the future. And, and that's where we, with, with the businesses that are in there, yes, they're not retail, you're not going to have the walk-in, you're not going to have the customer flow going into that warehouse. You're, you're going to have, basically, there's two, two employees that show up for the blinds company, they park, their vehicles are all parked inside, they park their personal vehicles on the outside. H2 has one, one employee, he parks his vehicle on the outside, all of their trucks are parked on the inside. So as far as walk-in, or walk-in, people coming in to, to walk in as customers in that warehouse space, there's zero. So that, that's where we've kind of taken the discussions to the point of, okay, I mean, if, if there's nine spaces on, and why did we pick nine? There's a handicap, we picked nine over here to say, you know, the parking would be pretty much to cover part of the dance studio. If they need, you know, she had brought it up to the, to the council about having, not understanding that sign, her employees might need ex, extra places to park, so that's what we discussed. And we said, okay, well, let's change this, get rid of this, just let's ensure that we do not have that overnight parking. And, and then let's focus on the other six, which is closer to First Street, which you have a lot more businesses that you have that type of people coming in for an hour for a haircut, or whatever they're doing. That was the reasoning behind it.
Excuse me, Mr. Grassi, but the first thing you said is, eight of those are kind of different, because if you build another building or develop that property further, those eight would go to service, service that building? Am I hearing that correctly?
Not 100%. I have to put still four more spaces in for another, the other building that would be built to the west, I mean, I'm sorry, to the east of the existing warehouse.
Yep.
I don't know if you can pull it up there or not, but there's already spaces, four more spaces needed for that, which I'm already set up to do that.
Okay.
But if down the road, if we do, if we do build the center building, there will be some, obviously, there's going to be walk-in, there's going to be retail there.
So, I'm, so those spaces would no longer be public?
No, let me clarify that. Those, those spaces will always, always be public, and it's going to be in the deed that they have to be public. The eight spaces, we're talking about counting the number of spaces towards the requirement for their project.
Okay.
So every project, you know, that-
Thank you. That clarifies it.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm familiar that if you build a certain square footage, you need a certain amount of spaces.
Right.
I'm tracking.
Gotcha. So eight, so eight of those 16 spaces are act, are going towards his count for the project. They're not, those are still public parking spaces, though.
Right.
He doesn't get to say, the developer doesn't get to say, those eight spots are only mine. Well, that's not public parking.
Right.
So, right.
Which is, which is right. I mean, that's what we had kind of started off with, is, is we wanted to put up a sign saying, no, those are ours, but our, in the negotiations was, is, well, why am I going to develop all this if I don't get anything out of it?
So, and so let me understand this. In essence, what you're asking us for tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute the parking deed restriction. That restriction is basically that mock-up, I just, for lack of a better word, right, with the nine on one side and the six on the other side at this point, correct?
The agreement actually gives the developer the right to manage how those-
Sure.
-spots are. Currently, they're proposing this in that fashion, but they could change that in the future according to the current agreement, but they would always have to remain open as a public parking spot.
Sure.
They couldn't be reserved specific to the Merchant Yard.
Which is nice, because why do we want to be a referee in even another situation? We do not want to be a referee in another, in another situation. If this is a situation where the developer has talked with some of the other principals and the neighbors, in the neighborhood, and this sounds like this might be the most reasonable solution for this point in time, then yeah, then-
I'm a little confused on one thing. Why, if, if he's allowed to do what he wants with the parking spots, why does he have to come here and tell us about this tonight?
Well, tonight, it was to get you guys, we're getting, trying to get authorization for the deed restriction as we have laid it out, and that is part of the agreement in that deed restriction, is that he would have the, the ability to make that, that choice on those parking spots. They will always need to remain public parking.
So that's not finalized? The deed restriction is not finalized yet?
No, we're asking you guys to authorize me to sign the, the deed restriction as presented tonight.
Oh, what was in place before tonight?
There hasn't been anything. There's been negotiations. His original agreement, when we exchanged the property, what, there was a basic design and layout of what those improvements would be.
Okay.
But now we're formalizing that agreement.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
And, and to be clear, the actual agreement that we're asking city council to authorize is Exhibit B to, to number four. There's not a tab in it, but if you go in a couple pages in-
What page number does it say?
Well, it says one, oh, 89. At the top, if you go to page 89 of your agenda package, that is, these couple of pages here, is the agreement we're asking city council to approve, which specifies exactly what we've been talking about, the public parking easement, the parking restrictions, and you'll see in the actual agreement, the actual restrictions that are in here just says, no parking between the hours of midnight and 5:00 AM. That's the no overnight-
So that's a hard, no changes, that is hard to ask for sure, in perpetuity, if you will.
And just to let, you know, the use agreement with the azores, they're not supposed to go to, be, go past midnight anyway on under their vents. Actually, they're supposed to stop.
And then so as business needs change, he may change, maybe it's a four hour or two hour window, one way or the other, or remove it completely.
Correct. And this way, the city staff and city council's not involved with that at all. That's between what the developer needs and the, you know, business to business. They could talk to each other-
Right.
-and say, can you please adjust these hours, or take them away, and let the businesses work it out.
That's what I'm just trying to figure out. Maybe I'm missing that everybody else is getting it. If we put this in place, and then tomorrow he goes, I don't want to do that anymore, I'm going to do something else. Does he have that right?
Yes.
Then what are we doing?
It always remains public.
Huh?
But the, but the prop, but the parking spaces are always open to the pub-
But tomorrow, he could go, I'm going to put signs up saying, one hour parking on all of them, if, whatever he wanted to do, essentially, right?
As long as they're all-
So if he, so worst case scenario, I don't believe you're going to do this, Mr. Grassi, but I'm going to say it, two weeks down the road, it's like, you know, that's not working, and he takes all the restrictions on the hourly parking, every employee parks on all 16 spots-
Or, right.
-the whole day during the business. Technically, he can do that. Is that correct, Mark?
Right.
In essence.
In essence, that-
It's public parking, but businesses, I'm, I'm pretty sure the dance studio doesn't start at eight in the morning, other businesses around that facility do, if they have more employees. If he decides that the business needs of his renters, tenants outweigh that of the rest of the businesses, he can remove that, and at that point in time, any employee can park there in that point in time for that the rest of the day.
Well, actually, any, any employee from any other business could park there for the entire day as well. So it's, it's, if the, that might be the intent, you know, worst case scenario, that might be the intent, but the flip side of that is, other businesses, let's say the dance studio doubled in size, got more instructors, and all of a sudden they have full-time instructors. If that happened, then those employees could be parking there all day and not just his tenants' employees.
I don't have a problem with his, his, the problem I have with the parking is, a two hour parking window is fine. The problem I have is that seven to seven, it's a two hour, where is it stated from seven on the, the limitation on parking?
It's not, it's inferred.
Inferred.
It's-
I wouldn't have thought it.
Seven to seven.
I would.
And during seven to seven, it's two hour parking. It doesn't say you can't park there after seven, it's seven to seven is two hour parking, but it does say no overnight parking.
Midnight to five.
So therefore, it's just-
It doesn't specify the midnight to five again, but-
So there is no limitation from seven o'clock till midnight? You go there three hours.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Five hours.
That's all.
Five hours.
So you're going there for dinner or wine on a, on a Tuesday, or Friday or Saturday? You could be there more than two hours.
Three hours, whatever you want, after seven o'clock.
I do, actually, now that I've read this again, I do have one, actually, correction I'd like to make. So under the agreement, Section 2, Parking Restrictions, 2.1, parking shall be prohibited in the parking easement area between 12:00 and midnight and 5:00 AM. Great. 2.2, owner may establish at its discretion a two hour limit on parking in the parking easement area, that really, that two, number two, should be crossed out, and it should just be an hour limit, or a hour limit on parking. This way, the developer can change it to four hours, maybe that's going to be the-
Well, should we have, it couldn't be less than two hours.
Well, again, we're leaving that hour restriction, if anything, to the developer, so, because the developer knows the business needs, the developer will talk with the surrounding-
What about after seven o'clock? After seven o'clock, is there any-
No.
-restriction there?
Currently, no.
Well, it can't be changed.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to get rid of that two in here, because I realize two is pretty restrictive.
Okay.
Where it might be four, six, or something, and again, without specifying-
I'm not worried about more, more, I'm worried about less.
Right. And then 2.3, parking of abandoned wreck dismantled, unregistered-
If you don't want it to go between, be lower than a two hour limit, it could be at its discretion a two or more hour limit, two hour or more limit on the parking. I think that's what he's saying. He doesn't want it to go to one hour parking.
Oh, gotcha.
So, we could do a two hour or more limit could be established.
I would be agreed, agreement to that. The other thing is, on the, in the agreement, it shall never be less than two hours, and the agreement should also say that after seven, there's parking, and that can never be changed either, after seven. So after seven, there's five hours of parking there, whoever gets the places first got them.
I, I'm hesitant, I mean, the council's going to decide what it wants. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to-
Here's my logic, Mark. My logic is this, now, we gave a piece of property at a reasonable rate for a certain agreement. That agreement was, we have some public parking. I want that public parking there, and I don't want it to be restricted, choked down to where it's not useful.
Well, here's the problem. There's eight designated spots that count towards his-
Development.
Development, right?
Correct.
But we're giving him control over all 16.
Right.
So I think we need to designate the eight that go to the count, and then he can put whatever limitations on it that he wants, but the remainder should be open for, controlled by the council, controlled by the city, for whatever restrictions, because, because it is a public parking area. And I think that we need to keep in mind that we should be controlling at least access to those eight that remain, and let the business owner do what he needs to do with the other eight.
That's reasonable.
And I, I'm okay with the proposal where you have the nine that are just no overnight parking, then there's a handicap stall, then you've got the six with the, the two hour limitation to start. I think that, that seems to be the best compromise of a fairly bad situation of parking, right? So, but I, I don't want to relinquish all 16 spots to the business owner, because the businesses might all get along right now in that area, but at some point, they're not. And we've had that happen on Main Street, we've had that happen routinely. So, I think out of the, the best interest from a public standpoint, and providing what parking we can for the public down there, that's the best compromise that I see. So, I think it's better, like in the 2.2 there, that we designate which of those parking stalls, it could be the, you know, the east side or the closest to First Street, those first eight spots would be designated for the business, unless there's some more equitable or better distribution of those parking spots for the businesses that are actually on that property. But that can be negotiated. But eight of those should not have developer control over the hours, other than the no overnight parking.
I would agree.
Is a handicap spot going to be restricted to the two hour, or is that an, an all-day thing? Just to clarify for the community.
That's got to be for the business, for the warehouse, that's what it was dedicated for.
That's required for the businesses, right?
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out what that is, okay.
You've got to have one.
So, if we, if we allow eight of the parking spots to have the council still decide, I mean, what, what, the, the times and the hours, I mean, will everything else in this agreement still be set? I mean, or, or what are your thoughts on that?
Well, we're looking at the two hour parking.
Well, I like that, okay, I'll go with the two hour parking. I get that.
And then after, after seven, they can park the five hours, but no that parking. That's what we're talking about.
But no what?
That's what we're talking about. No overnight parking.
Oh, yeah, no overnight parking. My, I think about the only thing that maybe Councilmember Leggero and I, excuse me, Mayor Protem Leggero and I differ on is, you know, do we wanna still be having control of eight of these? And therefore, it'll always continue to be an issue of where the referee, you know, there are private parking lots all over town. Never have issues with them. Why? Because they're private parking lots, you know? Even though the public park's on them all the time, we're not, we're not the referee.
And we should've sold the whole land and not been part of it at all.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying. This is gonna go on all night, uh, uh, these issues, just simply because, as whenever we're the referee in something, okay, and if we're allowing ourselves to be the referee in something, it's gonna happen and come back again and again and again. So that's the only thing that I would disagree with, you know, Mayor Protem Leggero.
So I think the, the objective of the parking deed is set those restrictions where you're still mainly maintaining the public parking for the neighboring businesses. Because you are asking this developer to maintain and to enforce that area. So the, the parking deed is to set restrictions that still give him the ability to make changes, but still remains a public parking where others can access it. So if you say that he can establish the two hour or more parking limits, that means that those parking spaces will always be available for at least two hours. If he puts no parking restrictions on there, then there's no parking restrictions, it's still open to the public.
We're not upset, I'm not concerned about the two-hour parking. I think we're fine with that. I think the problem is making sure that it doesn't change any lower than two hours. In addition to the five hour, after that, the five hours open on those units we're talking about. Cause we made a commitment to the public by giving their land to this gentleman to develop. Part of our agreement was to establish some public parking. Now, as far as refereeing, I got news for you. The city's always refereeing something. That's just the business.
So why don't we change it to say that the owner may establish at its discretion a two-hour or more limit parking between the hours of 5:00 AM and 7:00 PM?
Yes.
On eight, on eight spaces.
On eight spaces. That works.
Yeah. At his discretion, what those eight are.
Yeah. But no less than two hours. And from five on, it's gonna be wide open.
Seven.
Seven wide open.
Yeah.
Yeah. As long as that's part of it, I can sign off on it.
All right. That sounds good.
I can sign off on that.
Maybe, if I may.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, we see if there's any other public comment on this issue and.
I intended that.
Awesome.
I knew what you were thinking. I was not. No, I don't, I'm not quite keen yet, but I'm working on it. Any one of the audience have any input on this they'd like to add to it this evening? You're more than welcome to give us your opinion. And since no one's breaking their leg to come down.
If I may, can I ask Mr. Grassi to come back up?
Well, he's part of the crowd out there, he's entitled.
Mr. Mayor.
So if I understand it, the six or six or seven spaces, who, who would be taking care of those spaces and who would be monitoring that two-hour parking?
I don't know. You put a sign up like everybody else, I guess.
Yeah, that, that works really well on my private property.
Well.
I can tell you for the last two and a half weeks, it's just been a non-stop battle on keeping people from parking in there that are not supposed to be parking in there.
It's the same parking problem maybe where in the world.
Well, it is, it is.
I mean, what are we gonna do?
I fully understand that, but I'm just asking, if, if, if you're saying that the city wants to main, you know, maintain that control of that, who's going to monitor that?
If I may add. So this is the way I envision it. So it's, it's your property, you've developed it, but the, part of the agreement is that half of those stalls or eight of those stalls are open for the public. So I don't think it's right to give you sole discretion over the time limits and restrictions on that. I think that we, as a city, should have some input on that. So for eight of them, I think you have the, the freedom to do the two-hour restrictions, you know, whatever you think is right for your businesses. But when it comes to the other eight, I think that needs to have more, we need to be involved in that. If there's gonna be a change to the timeframe or anything like that. Because we have to look out for the public, you know, on the, on the public parking stalls there.
So now you have, you have a remedy on those signs already, you know, that, that goes beyond that hour time, you will be towed. And I think there's a phone number and a towing company on it. So would he be in charge of, or calling on those eight?
This is a very important point that's been negotiated. Please let me clarify this. The, the developer is in charge of maintenance and of enforcement. That was a very key negotiation on this. So I don't want any confusion on that. That hasn't changed since we've been talking for the last year. And just to collect, uh, correct, uh, Councilmember Leggero, all of those spaces are open for parking. Eight of them was desi, are open for public parking. Eight was just to go towards account.
Right.
So the only thing that would change that's being discussed here is that section two point two, that just says eight of the spots, the council gets to set the time restriction if they want to. The other eight spots, you can, it's back to, you can make it two, you can make it four, you could do no time.
Are they private or are they public?
They're all public. They'll always be public. They're all public.
So what's the difference with what we're just proposed? What we proposed? We proposed giving basically full reign of public to park. And we're basically just saying to extend the time period for the dance hall, for whoever, the barber shop, you know, we're, we're already, they're already hurting to park. I mean, I, I noticed the, the owner of the barber shop parked down at the dance studio the other day.
Right.
Okay? If he could park where we're talking in those nine stalls and not have to worry about anybody calling him, that would relieve her. If her, if her, um, uh, teachers in her, uh, for her business could park there and not have to worry about moving their vehicles.
I think that's what we're trying to do. We're saying, we're saying all the exact same thing. It's, it is the agreement. The only thing that's being changed is on those spaces that can have, uh, so, half of those spaces, the council gets to say whether it's two, four, or six and stick up a sign that says two, four.
We wanna make sure that half of those spaces have a time limit on them and they're not wide open for all-day parking.
Which is what you agree to. They, they, the council just wants to be able to change that on.
Right?
Yes.
Isn't that what we already. We're just, we're just, we're just taking away your ability to make that go away.
For, for eight of the spaces.
Eight of the spaces.
That's it.
But six of them already have that in the drawing.
No, we, we proposed that. Right now, it's all the way across.
Right now, it's two hours.
No, you proposed this, right?
Yes.
I know, but when we originally put this together to get things moving ahead, we agreed to the two-hour parking, which was part of the deal. And that was across the board on all the sixteen spaces. Then, when the dance studio has come and discussed that, you know, they're concerned with the two-hour parking, doesn't really fit, you know, their scheme going on, that's where we negotiated and says, okay, well, I don't see a reason why they can't have unlimited timeframe parking for, whether it's for the owner or for the employees, to be able to have their business work.
So on those eight, as eight stalls, is the dance studio gonna have to come up to us versus going to the developer? I mean, how's this all gonna work? How are we gonna know?
We're not eliminating ours.
That's a good point, what Councilman Swift's bringing up.
Well, so eight of them has proposed, his eight, it's, uh, the, Mr. Grassi's eight, it sounds like he's gonna be removing those signs for the two-hour limits. And for the other eight, it sounds like the council are gonna leave a two-hour limit or change it to a four, six, at whatever the council's gonna want. So there will be at least eight spots that don't have any restrictions.
I'm okay with that.
Except for no overnight parking.
Correct. Exactly.
Thank you, correct.
I'm good with that.
And the others are.
That's what it says here.
Right. And the other eight spots are for the, what's being proposed is the council will leave the two-hour signs up or they'll say what's changed.
I would like to see those eight spots, as long as we say basically, there's a restriction on those that's not all-day parking, I'm fine with that. Whether it's two or four hours, I don't care personally. But I want some restriction on that so that people can come and go and not have all-day parking.
I want it to be public parking and not closed.
Do we, do we want the council to?
Isn't that what we have up here right now? I believe so. Other than, we're arguing about numbers at this point.
Well, I see a six parking space, I see a handicap at nine. What is exactly what you're talking about?
One sixteen sites.
This is sixteen total, but you're showing me six parking places with two-hour parking limits and no overnight. I thought it was supposed to be eight.
Well, we just changed that during our discussion.
Oh, it's been rechanged.
Yes, council has been discussing changing that from sixteen to eight.
So.
Okay, wait, so six on one side, we wanna take eight of the nine on the other side. So on each parking spot, you gotta read the sign as to where you can park, how, what they're, I mean, I don't know. I just don't know how we're gonna read.
So I think that's why, because there were six parking spots on the side, on the one side of the handicap, closest to First Street, made the most sense to be the two-hour parking.
Sure, sure, sure.
And then that way, it's not quite as confusing for parking in, in the area.
I am, uh, not in favor of this, uh, having control over the eight. I understand, it kinda makes sense, but I think it's gonna, you know, it's gonna cause more problems than it's gonna solve, in my opinion. And so I'm in favor, I like this plan, uh, that's been presented to us. Uh, I don't want control over the eight spaces.
So, I mean, the other avenue would be that we said at minimum, six spaces have a two-hour minimum time limit on it.
She's right there.
Which would, which would line up with what has been proposed. So you would always have your six spaces, well, potentially the six closest to First Street.
I don't think anybody's got a problem with the two-hour minimum that Mayor Al's proposed. I don't think anybody's got a problem with that, you know?
No.
Like not taking it below two, you know? And therefore, we keep it there, I think the same. I think about the only thing that's in question is what do we do with eight of those spaces? You know, do we let, do we let the developer figure it out, you know, with the other people around there? Or do we just guesstimate what's gonna be best for the people around there? I mean, I, how are we gonna figure that out?
I don't, I don't know that.
Well, first of all.
We're gonna figure that out. I think that, that's why this was initially established.
Okay.
At the developer's discretion, but setting limits to what the developer could impose in that area.
Let's relook, relook at this whole thing. The idea of this parking is public parking. It's not to facilitate the businesses per se, for them to have personal parking. This was a parking environment for people who wanted to come to businesses to park. That's what it was for.
Right.
Okay? So if you're coming to a business, chances are, you're not gonna be there more than two hours. If you are, I don't know what the hell you're doing. Okay, so two-hour parking makes sense. Now, after the seven hour, seven o'clock and the hall next door and the wine tasting and all the other things that are going on there, they should have a space to park. And at seven, they have five hours to play with. That all makes perfect sense to me. I don't know what the hell we're talking about. Jesus, I mean, we're going around in circles on this thing.
Where do the business owners park then?
Where do the business owners park? Well, you have, you have nine spaces right there.
But you're wanting to take that.
But you're saying we don't, you don't want us to park there?
No, I didn't say that. Let me, let me get it clear for you, Larry. What I'm suggesting is this, you have public parking there. We're telling you, or I'm asking you, eight of those places are set aside from you telling us that we can't use them at any time we thought we should. Because the initial idea of this whole thing was, is to enhance public parking. So I don't want you telling me we can't do that, ever. So what I want the city to have is the right.
I never said that. And that's not what I'm proposing.
Larry, I'm not suggesting you say it. I'm just telling you what I'm suggesting, okay? What I'm suggesting, again, clarity. Eight units or eight parking spaces for public use for this town. That's what this is all about.
No, it's about sixteen.
We don't get to use all sixteen.
Yes, you do.
He controls that. His parking hours are his control.
Only the parking, only limiting the parking hours to anybody.
And that's fine.
Whether it's be.
But we have eight units, there is no limit to what we can do. We decide that. And it's, what we decided is, or we're talking about deciding, is a two-hour parking window with after seven, they could park whatever they want. That's all we're talking about.
So in the currently draft, draft form, we don't have that eight, eight, control over eight spaces for time limits. That's what Councilman Leggero was suggesting.
And I like it.
Well, okay, right. So that's, it seems like the only catch here that's been discussed, really. Yeah.
Not to make this difficult, but the problem that I see here is this is an easement that runs with the land. So when it's sold, if Mr. Grassi sells, if Shanlar sells, it goes to a new owner.
Bingo.
And that new owner can do whatever he wants within the restrictions that we put in this, this deed. So although we might have a great relationship with Shanlar and Shanlar might have a great relationship with the businesses in the area and willing to adjust with them.
Right.
At some point, that may end. Or another business moves in that creates a, a problem for Shanlar and Shanlar decides that I wanna, you know, restrict everything down to two hours. That's my issue. And, and if.
I agree.
And the purpose originally of this was, we got out from under a road. You know, we got rid of Prospect as a road. We looked at it as turning it into a public parking area. This seemed to be the most feasible way to do it, to where you have a developer who develops it, does a nice project, puts it together, but always with the idea that those were gonna be open for, for public parking. So that's my only concern. So now we're taking those spots and we're turning them over to the owner of the property, whether that's Shanlar or some future owner.
But that's what the deed restriction sets the limits of what they can do.
Well, and that's why I'm looking at it, is what limitations do we want in place so that in the future, if there is another owner, if there's a, an owner that is less
Cooperative.
Cooperative with the neighbors, how are we protecting the community, the other businesses in that area from the whims of some new owner? Or the current owner, if he decides that he just wants to change things?
You know, I get where Mayor Protem was coming from. Is there any other remedy, Mark, that we could put in there, other than us actively managing those? In other words, you know, okay, fine, that's for the developer, sixteen parking spots or even eight of those parking spots, if he wants to change the time, you know, can you get a consensus of the council and agreement so that we're on the same page? Can we do something like that?
He doesn't even need to come to the council, it's just communicate with the city.
Well, yeah, anything, anything like that, you know, short of, I just wanna see like ten different signs for ten different times and, and.
You're not gonna have ten different times for ten different signs, you're gonna have probably two. One's gonna relate to the eight and the other's gonna relate to the balance.
And it's fine.
Councilmember Swift, I could wordsmith this any which way that the council sees fit and that Mr. Grassi would like, you know, that's gonna pass muster.
Yeah.
Cause it's a, it's an agreement. We need to, both sides to sign off on this.
Yeah, I mean, I see where the Mayor Protem's coming from and I get it. You know, I just, again, something more, more than active, because I all, I don't wanna remove completely the, the developer's input or opinion as to what kinda times we should have on these signs. They're the boots on the ground. We're not. Now, if we have an option to either, you know, override it or something like that, that's great, you know? Because you're right. I mean, who knows what'll happen with the next person? Who knows?
That's my question.
You know, that's a very good point.
Does the, the deed restriction goes with the property, though? If it's sold, and it says that sixteen spaces have to be reserved for public parking. That's never going to go away, even if the new owner, they're, they're not going to be able to come put a sign up and say, "This is parking only for the lumberyard sellers," or something, right?
Right.
So I don't think that's something that would come up. I mean, it's already written in there. You know, the deed goes with it.
Yeah, but if...
The deed restriction goes with it.
But if we, if we do have that provision where, okay, fine, you know, the developer, whoever the boots on the ground are, you know, it's got to be, for those eight spots, it's got to be with our consensus, too. That gives us a little bit of control without taking over some that, really, we're not the ones there.
What if we have, you know, like 2.2, owner may establish at its discretion, so it's the owner's discretion about this time limit. What if there's some sort of a, a provision for dispute resolution, or something like that? Because I agree, we don't want to be in the business of, of micromanaging that parking lot. But if there is a dispute that arises between business owners in the area, or we feel that it's not being utilized in, in, to the benefit of the public, I think that's the role that we could participate in. It's just resolve disputes, and whatever, you know, the decision is, either we, we negotiate with the parties involved, we negotiate with the owner. But we have to have some authority over, I would say, at least eight of those parking spots.
Absolutely.
Just in the event, and human nature tells me that there will be a dispute.
Guaranteed.
I, I can roll with that, if Mark can, to cure out that language, you know?
Eight spots, well, some sort of eight-time limitation on parking at all times.
Well, that's what we've been arguing all the time.
But then, if you, if you set that limitation, there's no need for dispute resolution?
Yeah, I think it's just a dispute resolution. If there's a dispute there. And that...
I'm sorry, what was that?
If there's a dispute with that parking area, then we have to have some, some ability to, to rectify the dispute.
Eight units.
Yep.
Eight's fine.
Well, the other eight, he is in his discretion.
I'll just go with just the eight, not the whole bench-a-lotta.
Well, it's already said to be public parking all the way, no matter what.
So, Mark, do we end up with a motion on any of this, or is this something you just want further discussion?
You want to bring it back? I believe.
No.
Well...
We have to write, I'll sign off on it.
I, I was hoping that any little changes, we could kind of flush out now, since we have all the parties here. And there really are minor changes that we're talking about. Because we would really like to get the, this approved, the agreement approved, so we could get it recorded and wrap up all of the escrow for this property.
Can you give us the language tonight, Mark?
I could.
You want to try?
Yes. That's what I've been thinking about for a minute.
No pressure.
Well, and it's also, I've heard kind of, I haven't quite actually heard a consensus yet, actually. I've almost been waiting for somebody to jump in and throw a motion in here.
I was waiting for myself.
Because I've been hearing two things, kind of, one, just as-is is good, and one with the modification of us, of the city being able to control the eight. I, so I'm not sure, I've heard a consensus yet. I, I am happy...
So, would you like a motion?
Would, yeah, what do you need?
Well, that's what I'm curious, because if there's a motion that's going to say, "Just adopt as-is," and that's going to...
That's not going to happen.
Then, okay. So let me, let me, give me one minute to rework this, then.
All right.
It's going to be something to the effect of owner, and all we're changing is 2.2. And it's going to be, the intent is to keep it with everything that's been agreed to with, with Mr. Rossi and discussed here today. So owner may establish at his, at its discretion an hour limit on parking in the parking easement area for eight of the sixteen spaces, period. And we're going to add one more sentence. Owner may establish an hour limit on the parking for the other eight spots in the parking easement with approval of council, or upon approval of city council.
Then what's the difference? Do we just, I don't understand the difference.
No, no, I, you know...
Well, so eight, he, the, the developer can take away the signs or put up signs, and the other eight, if, if he wants to add or remove the time restrictions, he has to come and get council approval.
City approval.
City approval.
Subject to city approval.
Right.
Yes.
Keep it at the lowest level. If, I don't know if there needs to be a follow-on line about disputes.
The deed says what it says. I mean, it says, basically, he can't...
And did we want a minimum two-hour, two-hour or more restriction?
That's what it says, right?
Minimum two hours.
Minimum two-hour or more.
Negative, correct. Well, then, on the other eight, is there a limitation?
That's a question for the council.
Is there a limitation on the minimum hours you can park on the other eight?
Well, that's up to the council to discuss.
So he, he could drop it down, or whatever he wants? Make it an hour parking?
Well...
Forty-minute parking?
It's subject to city approval, so I would suggest maybe we figure out what that minimum is tonight, and any other changes after that. It would have to be subject to city approval.
I would suggest our opening syllable should be, you know, what, what the developer was thinking of. See how it works?
Yeah, he indicated two hours.
That works.
Yeah, it works.
So that's the minimum?
Yeah.
Okay.
So with that language in there, with that amendment in there, can I move to...
Well, let's read it out before we go any further. I want to get it clear before we do any voting on it. Would you like to read it, Mark, to what we have now?
Yeah, let me finish right now.
Sure.
Basically, it's going to be, you know, authorize the city manager to execute the deed restriction with the family amendment.
That's correct.
And we'll let Mark read that instead of us.
But the eight units will be...
We're confused.
The eight units, we, the blinders, us, will be determined, if there's any change, we have to agree to it.
That's all.
Parking essentially was going to be...
Well, when you get to it, we'll talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let me try this. Owner may establish at its discretion an hour limit on eight parking spaces in the parking easement area, period. Owner, um, the, the other eight parking spaces in the park easing, easement area shall have a minimum two-hour parking limit for those eight spaces, subject to change upon council approval.
That's fine. What about the other eight? Do we have a deal where it's not, you can never go less than two hours?
We said it was the other eight?
Yes.
That's for the developer discretion. I understand, because it's going to, it'll be only over, no overnight parking.
Understood. He can go to thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, whatever?
On those eight, theoretically, yes.
Okay, that's what I want to get clear.
And again, I move to authorize the city manager to execute the parking deed restriction with the amend, amendment on section 2.2, as recited by the city attorney.
Jeff, did you have some concerns? I...
Now, the, okay, that second sentence, owner may, is to read that part again.
It was, um, the owner will establish a two-hour limit on the remaining eight parking spaces.
A minimum.
What's that?
Minimum of two hours.
A minimum, thank you, a minimum of two-hour, uh, limit on the eight remaining parking spaces in the parking easement area, subject to change upon city approval.
City.
Now, let me ask you another question. Do we have to stay in there after seven o'clock? There's a five-hour parking? Or does that just assumed?
I will, I will suggest with, to the developer to modify the sign to make it clearer for the public that after seven o'clock until midnight, there is no restriction.
Thank you. And overnight parking?
That's always going to be there.
Very good. Okay.
Overnight parking from twelve.
I think we're on the same page.
It's already all on there.
Great.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Clarification.
Very good. Okay. We have a motion?
I would second that motion.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Is that aye yes, or aye no?
I said it when you asked for the noes.
So that means nay?
Nay.
Okay, so we have four to one. Motion carries.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. All right.
For your patience.
Well, our job is to protect our city.
Yes.
That's what we do. All right, where is it? Number six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, number six, discuss available properties for future parking lot development.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item was requested to be added to the city council agenda for discussion by Councilmember Crummick and, and Mayor Protam Leggero. City staff asked the city engineer to provide cost estimates of developing these parcels into parking lots. And so Exhibit A, we have a site plan with parcel information, and Exhibit B, we have engineers' estimates for parking lot construction. Um, so in Exhibit A, we have parcel number one indicated by the blue dot, or the blue location for number one, which is addressed 1303 First Street, which is the corner of McHenry Avenue and First Street. It's currently an eighty-two-hundred square foot parcel. It is on the market for sale to be sold with parcel number two, which is below it. Um, the listing price at this time is three hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, for parcel number two, which is that larger parcel below it, um, that is a seventeen thousand, ninety square foot parcel, um, also listed at that three forty-nine with parcel number one. And then parcel number three is also on the market currently for sale, uh, roughly eleven hun, or eleven thousand square foot parcel, current listing price a hundred and seventy thousand. Um, so we did provide in Exhibit B, um, costs or estimates associated with parking lots for parcels one and two, uh, which is on the first page, uh, roughly totaling three hundred and fifty-five thousand. And this is for development only. This is not including, this price is not including the...
Purchase price.
Purchase price.
Or engineering.
That's part of it.
And then for the parcel number three, which is the smaller lot, uh, not located on the corner, but along First Street, um, the price would be estimated at a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
Let me ask you...
And that's for full development as a parking lot.
Now, what I don't understand, and I still don't understand, is we have parking lots. There's one across the tracks that has, what, thirty spots? Why aren't people parking in that lot and walking? It's the same thing with the downtown. Uh, the complaints I had because of the parking, people complained, we took their parking. Good God, we have the parking right there. How far is it? A block, two blocks? Why can't people walk? Why are we buying this, why are we putting our money into facilitating people who have business with no parking?
I think, to be brutally honest, I think most every other town that has, if I were downtown, you are walking a little bit.
Damn right.
And I think that, maybe that concept, I mean, with all the respect towards our downtown section, you know, I think we're on the cusp of really developing into something really, really cool.
You're doing a great job.
Which means that we're not used to the notion of, yeah, you're going to have to walk. I mean, that's what every other town you're doing. And so I think that we're not used to that concept yet.
I'm used to it. I lived in Southern California for seventeen years. You walk sixty blocks. It's crazy.
Well, you got, the issue's not about people walk. I think people probably do walk. It's, it's that it's not enough parking. We have thirty spaces. You got lots of businesses. You have some street parking. So we're trying to think of a long-term solution to a long-term problem.
You have thirty units or meters that'll last quite a while, buddy?
It's not my job to sit up here and tell people, "You should walk. Go park whatever." I mean, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I think there's a need for parking to better facilitate that area. That's the reason I wanted to discuss this. Um, these numbers, you know, for the lot three, you know, sounded reasonable, honestly, to me. But for, to get twenty-five parking spaces, that'll probably service that area for quite a while. It's just something that we wanted to explore.
I think that's what makes this a tough one, because I agree with Councilmember Crummick. I think this does need to be discussed. And, yeah, I can tell, there's going to be parking issues down there. So now, it's a matter of, at what point is it worth it? If the city's going to be the entity to foot the bill...
If we're going to be in the parking, parking business, are we going to put meters in it to recoup our costs?
I don't know.
It's a service to the public good. So you do lots of things where you don't recoup costs, that, you know, exactly.
So, I mean, again, like the Center Street project, I can see that if, if it's a situation where you have, like, a grant, or Measure K funding, or something like that, that can open up for something like that as a major project. Why not?
Yeah.
But short of that, you know, at what point, you know, you want to invest in your community. You really do. You know, but is it worth it? Are we willing to take this big a chunk of taxpayer money? It might benefit everybody. I, I don't know. It's a tough one. It's a really tough one.
And then you're going to be monitoring that parking lot like you didn't want to monitor the other parking lot.
I guess the question is, how far to support the downtown if, if that was a consideration to buy property here on this corner?
That's not going to help the downtown.
That's not going to help our downtown area, because that's farther of a walk.
Exactly.
So I'm not sure that that's truly a downtown business help. It's a very select small group of businesses in that area.
Big businesses.
And, um, I'm not sure that there's enough ROI on that to possibly do that, especially considering parcels one and two are possibly in development. Um, I don't think there's enough business need at the end of that road. I recognize that she's outgrown her facility and might want to consider another location that has adequate parking for her needs.
Makes sense.
That wasn't a consideration, I don't believe, when she moved into the facility. As it was, when you look at the building, you can recognize there's not enough parking to facilitate two dance studios with six to ten kiddos and enough to parking. There was no parking when she moved into the facility.
We don't need to, we've been...
So I don't think that we need to look at purchasing land to support that or the church in the area to park.
I think that nobody up here has any better ideas, because there's no other land you could purchase, or there's no other place you could put a parking lot. So that's the reason I brought this up. It, if it's, if it's, it's, I'm not passionate about this, okay? If, this is something that, it's going to take a long time to figure out. But this is an option. This is one possibility. That's why we're bringing it up. If, you know, if there's three people up here that don't even want to discuss it, then let's not even discuss it. Let's just move on.
I don't think you toss it, because the thing about it, for example, I was there the other night at the, you know, one of the development, and there are a lot of cars there, you know, and it's not totally built out yet. Who knows what it's going to look like in two, three years? You know, the studio, you know, gets more and more people going into it, you know, and, uh, other facilities out there. So I don't think it's something that we need to toss. I mean, many, many cities have public parking all over the place.
Maybe you, maybe people that are going to go to the, the new lumber, the merchant yard go here. Maybe people from Escolon Transmission. There's the church. There's multiple, there's not just two things. There's multiple things that this could feed and could benefit.
How, I want to help with this crazy idea. Let's generate a business and let somebody else deal with it.
I'm not interested in talking about that right now.
Well, why not? I am. And what I'd like to...
Talk about parking.
That's what I'm talking about. Want to hear it? Okay, what I'm suggesting is this. We have a property owner who's pretty much ticked off to this city in a hundred different ways. But he also owns a piece of land back there that is a very nice area to be parking in. If somehow we can negotiate with Mr. Coleman to start a little parking business. Now, is that feasible, that a person could have a parking lot and have a business at the same time? In other words, he'd build it, but you could park there with, you paid a fee. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I like that.
Well, yeah. He could, he could develop his own parking lot and charge for the parking. It could be private.
But we all know that there's not good blood right now between him and the city. But let's do this. What say, I go and speak to them and say, "Listen, would you be interested in entertaining the idea of turning some of your land into a parking lot, and you can run it as a business and charge people to park there? Is there any objections by anybody here tonight that would say that might not fly? Or is it worth a shot?"
It's worth a shot.
Because here's the deal. I don't want to be in the parking business. You suggested tonight you didn't want to be in the parking business, and now you're talking about getting a parking lot. So what I'm suggesting is, people have to understand something. The buildings in town have no parking. It is not the city's responsibility to put parking in for them. It is the owners of the properties to solve that problem, not ours. So, that's why we can get Mr. Coleman, maybe, maybe not, but get him interested. Or maybe have somebody else go buy one of these lots and put a parking lot in, and let them put parking meters and stuff in there. It's a great chance for somebody to make some money. It's entrepreneurial. I love it. But for us, I don't think it's worthy of us, because I don't think we should be responsible for that. Now, if those businesses were booming businesses, all of them, bringing in revenue that made us choke, then maybe. But that's usually what you'll get when a council looks at this and other cities and go, "Hey, if we put the parking lot, look at the money we're going to make." That makes sense. I don't see it here.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You may be down the road. Right now, I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't do it.
So, I'd like to explore some other ideas. I'd like to go and talk to Coleman. I'd like to see if anybody can put a notice out that somebody buys that lot. We might work with them and let them put a lot in there, and they can recover their funds through meters or however they choose, permits per month. Then we have a new business in town that's making money for us, facilitating a deed we have, and we don't get stuck taking care of a parking lot. So does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. So I want to, if someone's objecting, I'm going to talk to Mr. Coleman. In the meantime, can we put a notice out that this property here, we would like to see somebody or put it out, if anybody interested in buying and putting a parking lot in? Can we do something like that?
Not the property owner.
Well, no. But we can call the property owner and ask him, or her, whoever owns it. I don't know who owns it. Is that still owned by Zach?
No.
No.
Who owns it now?
I'm not sure who owns it.
Amador is the last name.
They're not the same people who own houses in town here, are they?
You're talking about Lot Three, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not aware of any Amadores in town. It's Patricia Amador.
That sounds familiar.
The realtor is Greg Amador.
Oh, I've heard of him. Yeah, I've heard of him.
Okay, Amador, Amador. Is that the one who had the house, the building next to the church?
I'm, I'm not sure. I, I'm not familiar with the name at all. They purchased it about three, four years ago.
Let me ask you this. Would it be improper for me to have their phone number to call them and ask them?
I don't know if I have a phone number for them, because that lot has no utilities.
Yeah.
On the sign?
Oh, but yeah. Yeah, the realtor's name, correct.
It's on the sign out there?
I can get that information.
Oh, yeah, give it to me. I'm going to try to do that. I think that would facilitate us a lot better.
Sure. There's nothing wrong with the city or staff reaching out to the agent and saying, "You know what the city would love to see? There is a private parking lot." All you're doing is making a suggestion to them.
That's right. That's right.
As to a viable, you know, a business, potential business.
Yeah.
As long as you're not negotiating or making any promises, nobody, it's, I don't see a problem with a council member, the mayor, or staff reaching out to the agent and just saying...
Well, is Lot One the same owner as Lot Three?
Lot One is the same owner as Lot Two.
And that's the Mr. Singh?
Correct. And currently, the, with the information that we've been receiving, they're in, only interested in developing Lot Two at this time.
That's correct.
So, that would be Lot One would make the most sense, because that parcel is, has no access.
Which one? Lot One?
Lot One.
Well, then, why would you want to put a parking lot there?
Well, because you're going to get your access off of Roosevelt, or you're going to get your access further up, either between three and one.
Don't you think that'd be too much interference with this being that close to that?
That's the problem, because it got landlocked with the widening because of the setbacks and stuff. So you'd have to work...
But you have an alley right here.
You have the alley, but you also have access. Two is going to develop. One could be parking. Access to one can come off of Roosevelt with the development of two.
It can go down the alley, too.
And you also have negotiation ability between fees. Hey, this is beneficial to the public good. You want to develop your business, and you have...
So, should I, should I talk to Mr. Singh, is what you're suggesting? That's, that's a smaller lot.
I like developing Lot One.
How big is Lot One?
It's right there. It's, uh...
Lot One is an eighty-two-hundred square foot.
Eighty-two-hundred.
That's small.
That's pretty small, yeah.
But he's, that would, how much parking do we really need in that area?
I don't know.
Well, three, that is...
Slightly bigger.
Is almost 11,000, gives you 25 spots, right?
Correct.
So it'd be less than 25.
Yeah.
Eighteen?
Eighteen. Eighteen wouldn't be bad, but I just, it's too bad it couldn't do mall. Alright, well, listen, I'm going to talk to both those people. I'm going to find out who they're talking to, and then I'm also talking to these people back there and see if we can come up with something. Because what about a combination place? For example, with the Coleman's place, what if we put parking back there with storage? What do you think of that?
Storage of what?
Well, if people want to store their vehicles, or like, kind of what we're doing here with the trailers and stuff.
It's not a bad idea either.
That was originally what they were interested in, in doing.
What happened?
They hired somebody to put together a cost estimate for doing it. It was my understanding that it costs too much to move forward with.
I can't imagine.
And they were willing to...
Well, let me look into that, too. But I think we're better off trying to approach it from that angle.
I like the idea of having a combination of somebody that wants to develop some of the properties down there.
Yep.
And getting a, a public benefit out of that development.
Yep.
You know, we have options, how we can negotiate.
Well, we could work with that individually, get some incentives, plus be able to facilitate the businesses down there. And I think everybody would be a winner in that situation.
Yep.
Alright, so what else do you want to discuss on item number six, people? Council members?
It's all good.
You're good, David?
I'm good.
And how about down here, we good?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're done. Want to open the public, though, we want them to talk about it. Okay. Public has an opportunity to come and speak about item number six if they like. Anyone interested? Okay, well, we'll bring it back to the council. And number six is done, we're going to go to communications for the council, and we're going to start with Mr. Crummich.
Thank you, Mayor Als. Just got a few things. I'd like to start by saying that the, the planning commission has a big responsibility in this town. We need to recognize that. And although they are not elected officials, they assume the role of elected officials, and they make decisions that impact our community. I learned that Kurt Danzinger is no longer on the planning commission, and I spoke with him today. And I said that I'm sorry that he's no longer a member. He helped me a lot when I was running and new to the council. And I think it's fairly obvious to anyone who regularly attends these meetings or who runs in this circle, that Kurt often asked good questions. He was very informed, he was very motivated. And so I would just like to say I do not agree with the decision to remove him from planning commission, and I think that's a loss to the city. Number two, I have a, I want to make a motion tonight, and this is something that we could discuss, vote on, and get done tonight, because it only pertains to us. So here's my motion. My motion is that council members shall not be paid by the city of Escalon unless they attend a scheduled meeting. No absentee, or absences excused with pay or holidays. And if you're not here in person, by the phone, or online, then you don't get paid for that meeting. And I'm speaking for myself here. I got paid for two meetings in July, when we didn't have two meetings. And so I'm a little confused on what that is. But I don't think if we're not here doing our job, if we're not calling in or, or saying we're here and participating, then we shouldn't get paid. So I want some discussion on that right now.
Mr. Council, we cannot do it. It has to be agendized.
It's got to be agendized.
Even though it's just pertaining to us?
Yes, sir, it's really.
Alright, well, I'd like that on the agenda, please. Do I have a second? Doesn't look like it. I knew that would be a, a swing for the fences on that one. The last one, so COVID is kind of rearing up again, and I had kind of a long thing prepared, but I just will make my official statement on that. I am not in favor of enforcing any government mandated restrictions on individuals or businesses in this town. I'm not including the public schools, because that is outside our authority as a city council. Again, I am not in favor of enforcing any government mandated restrictions on individuals or businesses in this town moving forward related to COVID. Thank you.
That it? Councilman Crummich?
That's all I got.
Okay, Councilman Swift?
You know, I'm really, I'm, brevity is a solo whim, so I really don't want to talk too much, because I think we've done plenty of talking tonight. We've gone through some really tough issues tonight, and these always seem to be cropping up, the parking situation downtown, and so hopefully we've made some good decisions tonight that will be borne out in time, and so we shall see. And that's all that I have.
Councilman Bellinger?
I'll keep it brief as well. Just wanted to thank everybody in the community that came out, supported the Park Feet activities. I saw a lot of people having a lot of fun out there. It seemed like we didn't have too much trouble. Thank you, chief, for all that and all your hard work, all your officers. Thank you for the city employees for all that they did as well. Public Works taking care of teardowns, setup, taking care of the garbage cans and everything else. It was a great weekend, I thought. And I'll just leave it at that, that I thought it was a great weekend.
Protem Leggero?
Yeah, I second what David said, that Park Feet was a great event. It was a lot of fun. A lot of people got to finally get out and enjoy each other's company. Got the opportunity to work the wine booth in support of the skate park. And anybody that doubts that this community wants a skate park ought to come and work the fireworks booth and then work the wine booth. We are getting donations from kids, families, families asking when it's going to get built, where's it going to go, when can we use it? So they're tired of driving to all the surrounding communities to use their skate parks. So I would like to get the discussion about the skate park on the agenda as soon as possible to start talking about what the budget might look like, if we're going to use some rec funds to try and move that project forward, so.
I'd second that, to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
That's it.
Is there a particular, you want this on the next agenda?
We could probably get it...
The next agenda is September 7th. It's a Tuesday night. I don't know that we'll have any, it'll just be a discussion item.
Okay. I think that's a good start.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All I'm going to say is, like both Councilman Bellinger and Leggero, the Park Feet was a pleasant surprise. I mean, it didn't have the numbers of the best years, but at the same time, coming off COVID, it was something worthy of our time. The Lions Club did beyond expectations, which means the city will reap the benefits of that. And there will be substantial rewards, because there was substantial profits. And that's something we really cherish and love to do. I want to thank the chief and the police department, excellent job, excellent crowd control, that you didn't...